Noon everybody. We are now live. Ooh, yeah. So, thank you for attending this meeting of Communities Parks and Leisure Committee. I am councillor Curtis Crossland and I am chairing this meeting. This meeting today is open to the public and there are no items that contain any exempt information. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. And before we start, please can I check that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent? And so we don't disturb the conduct of the meeting. And I've just felt mine vibrating in my pocket, so I will do that now. There we go. There are no fire tests planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Judah Square. And for the benefits benefit of the webcast, we're going to go around all the members and introduce ourselves. So as I said, I'm councillor Curtis Crossland, I'm councillor for Baiton Ward and also the Chair of Communities Parks and Leisure. If we start on my left, so Rob.
Councillor Rob Rice, lived and councillor member for the East Huxfield Ward.
Councillor Alan Hooper, councillor for West Ecclesfield Ward.
Marianne Elliott, Green councillor for Gleepless Valley.
Lili Maolana, councillor for Parkin-Arbiton.
Councillor Karen McGowan, Labour councillor for Burley Ward.
Councillor Mark Witaker, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Councillor Laura Moynihan, Labour councillor for Manic Castle and Deputy Chair of this committee.
Thank you, everyone. If I can ask officers to introduce themselves when they are presenting their reports, that would be great, thank you. And so before we actually move on to the items of the agenda, we do have some sad news, which is that around two weeks ago, our colleague and committee member councillor Paul Wood sadly passed away. Councillor Karen McGowan is going to say a few words, if that's okay?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. So Paul was a big man, but he also had a very big heart and a very generous heart. He was always there to support people wherever, whenever, in time of need. He did so much for the Labour Party and the city over many years. He was the Chair of the District Labour Party, he worked closely with the trade unions and built great relationships. He was a councillor in Richmond Ward and then moved over to Woodhouse Ward. He was Deputy Chair of this committee and even though he was very ill and unable to speak without the help of technology, he did his very best for the people and the city. And he's going to be greatly missed and I'd just like to say, rest in peace, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Now, if you can, could we all please stand for a moment's silence for Paul? Thank you, everyone. So on to the first item, apologies. Have we had any apologies of absence? I don't think we have.
No, Chair, no apologies.
Thank you. Item two, exclusion of press and the public. So as I mentioned earlier, the meeting today is open to the public and there are no agenda items containing any exempt information. On to item three, does any member wish to declare an interest of any items of business on the agenda? No, perfect. Item four, minutes of the previous meeting. The item is to approve the minutes of a meeting of Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee on the 11th of March and 15th of May. These are from page 11 of the Agenda Pack. Are all these approved? All good? Yep, perfect, those are approved. So item five, which is public questions and petitions. We are now operating under a new scheme for public questions, so it is going to take a bit of a learning curve for this. We did have two petitions that were received for the previous meeting, which was then delayed. The first of which was to demand immediate upgrades and repairs for Stanington Park. That was sent in by Michael Chow. And the second was regarding water logging issues at Shire Green Cemetery, which was submitted by Tarek Rashid. Both petitioners have received written responses, which have been circulated to all members of the committee and published on the council's website. There are no speakers for either of these petitions today. We didn't receive any public questions before this meeting, but we have had one submitted, but we've discovered from Mr Hussein, who will be addressing the meeting and then will receive a written response after the meeting, if that's okay? Perfect, so if you'd like to make your way to the microphone over there, and then I think it's the, is it the right button? To activate it? Perfect, thank you.
Salam alaikum and chat, thank you for allowing me to ask these questions. I come here with a very heavy heart with an issue which has been risen for a number of months now, which has been addressed with this cabinet. It's the graveyard at Shire Green. There's a massive issue which we previously discussed and the Chair acknowledged the severity of the issue we have there. And we took away from that previous meeting that there will be a tier two report which will be conducted and published findings so that we can make an action plan. We've had a recent meeting with Breavement Services and to our disappointment, Breavement Services have failed to publish this document. A document was being paid by the taxpayer, commissioned by Sheffield City Council and now has been withdrawn from circulation on the proviso that it's copyrighted. We find it very shocking that this has happened. Also, on the back of that document, an action plan was to be made public and as of right now, there is no real way forward, which is causing the community a lot of distress. And as you appreciate, this has a lot of, it causes a lot of underlying health issues, anxiety, depression, as I mentioned on previous occasions. So my question here is, can the Chair assure me and the wider community that something's actively going to be done to have this issue at Shire Green fixed? That's the first part of my question. And the second part of my question is the cost relation to the burials, especially the costing for the concrete chambers, which they call the liners. A recent document being published by Breavement Services outlines the costings and from what we've established, the actual cost to install a concrete liner chamber into the ground with the drainage system costs approximately £850. Now, I am going to tell you guys today that Sheffield City Council Breavement Services charges the Muslim community £2,850 for their exact same service. This is beyond comprehension. There's £2,000 worth of profiteering being made by Breavement Services on the back of breathing families. How is that justified? I'm lost for words, so please, councillor, Chair, thank you again for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you for your questions. As I mentioned, we will send you a written response to all of those because, to be honest, we want to make sure that we get the facts right. This is obviously a very sensitive issue and a very emotional issue, so yeah, we will make all those questions and the written responses public and we'll send them over to you soon. So thank you again for asking your questions.
Thank you again.
Item seven is the work programme on page 25 of the Agenda Pack. And Rachel is presenting this one.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I'm Rachel Appleyard, Principal Democratic Services Officer. And so the work programme report sets out all known substantive agenda items for upcoming meetings of this committee. Section two on page 27 sets out where references have been received from other committees or council. There is one reference mentioned in there, which is from a motion received at the September council meeting, which relates to children's play and playwork. At this stage, we've identified the lead officer for that, which is Lorraine Wood, and further information will follow because this cuts across this committee and ECF as well. So there's a bit of work needed on how we're going to work together. The table on page 29 contains the, any changes or additions since the last meeting and from page 31 onwards, you can see all the agenda items for the next meetings of this committee. And if you've got any questions on specific items, I'll hand over to officers for those. Thank you.
Laura?
Would I be right in thinking that an update on the leisure facilities is coming in December? And also the Public Space Protection Order in December?
Yes, to both of those.
Right, thank you.
Karen first, and then Rob.
Thank you, it's just to say, I know we've had a restructure, so I'll take it that items that have now moved have been taken out of the work plan that would have been under this committee previously. So I'm just double checking that as one. Do community action groups come under this committee now, what we know as CAGs? Are they under this committee or not? Because one of my questions was going to be, could we have a look at those in the future work programme? So I don't know if it falls under here now. And I think that's it just for the minute, thank you.
Lorraine Wood, interim Director of Communities. Karen, regards the CAG, no, it will stay under the local area committees. Yeah, under the governance, but it will stay within communities, within communities. So local area committees will be part of the community service that sits within neighbourhoods under the new directorship of the Director of Customer Experience and Communities.
Sorry, can I just clarify, so it still comes under here, that's, yes, thank you, thanks.
Thank you, and I think regarding items that have moved, I think they've only moved directors, not committee ownership. I think the committee is still responsible for the items it was still responsible for previously. It's just the directorship has changed. Because a change of remit would require a full council approval and that hasn't happened, I would have thought.
I'll just clarify then, because we had youth services, didn't we? So we're saying we're still doing items of youth service under this committee. Thank you.
Perfect, bringing in Rob first.
Laura, was this relating to the last point? Okay, I'll give way to Laura and let her continue this.
It's just that the email we received from Adgeman wasn't very clear on that. It's confused quite a few of us actually, in terms of remits. So it's, it's good to have clarity that it's staying under here. Because I asked a question whether budget would move and was told, no, the budget relates to direct expenditure, whereas most of youth service is covered by grants. So we're all very confused here about that, I just want to make that point, thank you.
Just to jump in there, I think that we are trying to organise a meeting to hopefully take some of the mud off of our glasses.
We'll take that away, Laura, and make sure you get full clarity. But as Curtis, councillor Crossland explained, youth services, family hubs will be set in this committee area with all the others, communities, everything, yeah.
I'll go next. I was noted in, from conversations as a member of Huxfield Parish Council and wider conversations in the council, I was wondering whether we could add the, any discussion as to the community infrastructure levy? Because I believe Curtis has signed off on a number of these, but we haven't had a report for a while about allocations, how we as a council look at the strategy whereabouts in the city, especially as the local plan and neighbourhood plans are being completed. So I'm wondering whether that could be something that could be added?
Councillor Reese, yes, it can be added. And there is a report, I believe, probably going to S and R committee about community infrastructure levy. But that is all up to date and you should all have for your wards, the amount that you've got at the moment.
All right, I left my mic on. I, I understand that the, the current financing for the ward sale is kind of agreed, but it's more about the forward plan, about how this money is divvied up in the future, especially as things are changing. And I appreciate it is going to the S and R meeting, but given that it is a kind of a community focused fund, interacting with parks and a number of our kind of community projects, whether it could be something that we could discuss and have input into?
I'll definitely take that away and raise that as a point, definitely, okay.
Thank you.
May I suggest that as, if something's going to S and R, that we as a committee have a briefing on it, as it will have quite a big impact with the work that we do as well. The community infrastructure levy should be discussed by the Communities Committee really. So I think it would be good if we have an update on that in the future. Perfect, thank you, so we've all.
Curtis, councillor Crossland, Curtis, councillor McGowan is wanting to raise something on this.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
You have to do bigger waves with me.
It was only to say, I mentioned, could we have a, I don't know if this is the right point to raise it, but on the work plan, can we have community action groups? Just, there's something new that was set up less than a year ago and I don't know if, how they're working across the city. I know our minds working, but I don't know if it's working in every ward. And it doesn't have to be a detailed report, a long detailed report, but just wondered how they're going elsewhere.
Yes, councillor McGowan, you can, it would probably be after an informal briefing because it goes into the governance, it goes to the last chair meeting and the governance committee. So we can bring that to a briefing as well, an all-member briefing, yeah.
Great, thank you, everyone. So if we are all in agreement, are we happy to approve a recommendation set out on page 26 of the work programme? Excellent, those are unanimously approved. So now on to item eight, which is the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee Forward Agenda for 2024/25. These are on page, well, from page 37 of the Agenda Pack and Lisa and Lorraine will be presenting this.
Thank you, Chair, Lisa, first, Director of Parks, Leisure and Libraries. So yes, regarding the Communities Parks and Leisure Forward Plan for 2024/25, the executive summary of the report sets out how a report went to Strategy and Resources Committee earlier in this year and that set the overall ambition for the local authority. And the Forward Plan for Communities Parks and Leisure sets out the ambition for this policy committee. And it also sets out the achievements of the committee from 2023/24 as well. So the report points to the council plan and the council plan outcomes and particularly a place where all children can belong and all young people can build a successful future, great neighbourhoods that people are happy to call home, people living caring, engaged communities that value diversity and support wellbeing, a creative and prosperous city full of culture, learning and innovation, and a city on the move, growing, connected and sustainable. And what you will see throughout the report is a reference to all of those outcomes and how the work of this committee, both in terms of what we achieved in the last municipal year and also the coming year, touches on all of those outcomes. So the recommendations for the report is that committee is asked to note the progress made in 2023/24, recognising the work of elected members, members of this community, sorry, members of this committee, officers and partners to deliver against the objectives that were set and to support the strong foundations for the, strong strategic foundations for the organisation. We ask committee to consider the key issues identified in section three of the report as part of our Forward Agenda for 2024/25 and that the committee works across all policy committees in the council to ensure that opportunities and issues identified in section three of the report are taken forward as part of the wider council plan in 24/25. It's a long report, so Lorraine and I don't intend to take you through all the achievements in 23/24. But what you will, what you will see is the council's triple lock of outcome priority policy drivers of people, prosperity and planet. And what we've done is aligned all the achievements from 2023/24 within those categories so you can see at a glance how this committee contributes to those three policy drivers. For the coming year, we've then set out again within the council plan outcomes. Firstly, a place where all children belong and young people can build a successful future. There are seven objectives that we have set out. I should have said actually at the beginning that this is a live document. This is not probably a list of everything we're going to do this year. Things will change, we might reprioritise some of this work, but will also be things that we pick up along the way as well. So the first, there are seven objectives within the children outcome. And then we get on to great neighbourhoods that people are happy to call home. And as you would imagine, there are more outcomes there as well. So there are 13 currently set out there. Caring communities that value diversity and support wellbeing. We've set out nine objectives for the committee. And a creative and prosperous city full of culture, learning and innovation. There has six objectives in there, sorry, there is six objectives in there. And then a city on the move, again, four objectives in there, including things such as the Trees and Woodlands Strategy, which has the links to sustainability. And a Breavement Services Strategy, again, with those links and deliverables for sustainable environments. We then set out how the report contributes to the council plan and to the city goals. We have considered alternative options, which was to do nothing, but we didn't think that was an option, certainly for the Forward Plan. And also the committee needs to set out how citizens, how it's going to achieve for the citizens of Sheffield and what it's going to achieve in 2024/25. For this particular report, there are no equality, diversity, inclusion implications. But for each project and its deliverables, there will be equality impact assessments, financial, legal, climate considerations taken into account and assessments done and mitigations put in place for each project as we progress. And the recommendations support the continued strategic development of the organisation and will enable the delivery of the wider council plan and agree the key issues that this committee needs to address in the year 2024/25.
Excellent, thank you, that was very well done. I think what this report is very good at as well is highlighting the fact that a lot of the accomplishments are sort of on the ground, operational achievements that might not always come before a public meeting. So I think it's really good that we take an opportunity to celebrate those successes. So if I can get an indication from everybody who wants to speak, so I can try and share it out properly. Basically, everybody, is that Alan as well?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, yeah.
Oh, not yet, not yet.
Oh, sorry.
Did you have your hand up as well, Rob, or not?
Surprised me not.
No, okay, sorry, I must have imagined a thing. So Karen was the first up.
Brilliant, thank you, it is a really good report, like Curtis said. And it's a really helpful document, there's just a couple of things. So under 3.1.1, children and belonging. I'm on the parent, community parenting group, so I'm just wanting to make sure that in everything we do, looked after children etcetera are included in that. So I was just thinking, off the top of my head, I was thinking about the leisure review and making sure that we're considering them there. That's just one example, but this, I don't think I saw any mention of it in here and I was just, I know that, but I just want to make sure. So there's that one. And my second one was 3.1.6 about Graves and Central Library. You know, can we have regular updates on briefings like, you know, we've been having? But can we continue then? Because that's a really big and important piece of work. So I just want to make sure that we keep that momentum going, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McGowan. There is a provision in the new leisure operating contract for children, looked after children and their extended families as well. So I can give you that assurance, but yes, and take the point about that in the wider, wider services. And yes, we will commit to bringing new regular updates on the development and this committee will be involved in decisions around any central library decisions and any consultation and public engagement will be driven by this committee.
Thank you, in the interest of trying to share it out across the room, I'll go Alan, then Laura, then Marianne, that's okay?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, mine points the same, 3.1.6, page 49, the three areas and a focus. Focus one, I think we've done very well over the last couple of years of meeting our budgets in this committee. Number three, the leisure, we've progressed that to where we're going, hopefully for the new year, we've got the new leisure. It's number two, which is the issue and the challenge for this committee to get somewhere with Graves Gallery and the Central Library. It's been going on now for whatever hours, when I first started in 2004, the Central Library was a problem. We had the issue when the Chinese people are going to take it over and back out. We looked for alternatives, but the real challenge is to provide Sheffield with a state of the art library like some of the other core cities have, such as Birmingham, Liverpool and Manchester. I've been in the Liverpool one, I've been in Manchester one, I haven't actually had a look at the Birmingham one, that's the next one on the list. But there is a big opportunity for Sheffield to come up to scratch. So I hope this committee can move this along once we've found a way forward, but it is a real challenge. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alan, do you have anything to add to that? Or, yeah, Lisa?
Thank you, councillor Hooper, what I can add to the response that I gave to councillor McGowan is you're absolutely right. We need to look at the Central Library offer for a city the size of Sheffield. We will bring regular updates to this committee. What we're trying to do is not look at the library in isolation. We're also looking at how that connects to the council's new work around digital strategies and digital inclusion and also customer services and the wider accommodation review and making sure that all the links are joined up really in determining what a modern library service and a central library should look like for the city size of Sheffield, while also considering that the Graves building has the city's art collection as well. So we're doing the piece in conjunction with Museums Sheffield, it's at very early stages and we will be getting some support to help us to do that and all make sure that regular reports come back here.
Thank you. So Laura next.
Okay, under 3.1.3, number three, is something that's really, really important. The new leisure operator and our sport and leisure strategy. I think we do need to monitor the range of social and community outcomes with the new operator. And I wondered if it'd be useful to establish a formal link between the new operator and the VCS? Because in my experience, these things don't happen by accident and we do want to maximise social value and the supply chain with the sector. So I think it'd be useful to have a formal link. And then under the same 3.1.3, numbers five and nine, the focus there is on cohesion and I think in the light of riots, we need to prioritise this in our work because if we don't... Because if we don't, all the other activities will be undermined. So have we got a plan on how we're going to do that? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Monahan. On the leisure point that you made about the community outcomes, again, to give you some reassurance. So as the protest to transition from Sheffield City Trust to Everyone Active happens between now and the new year, the first point to note is that the trustees of Sheffield City Trust that sit on their charitable purposes committee, which covers the community outcomes, is actually meeting with Everyone Active, sometime during October and November, to be confirmed, to have, so that Everyone Active has a really good understanding of the work of that charitable purposes committee. So that, so we will incorporate that into the, into the contract. And then once the contract's in place, regular performance monitoring will happen. So we will know what outcomes are being achieved and where support is needed to Everyone Active. And as part of that, we will definitely pick up that about linking into the voluntary and community sector. Much of that happens currently, but there may, there may be other avenues that we need to look at. So we will certainly pick that up for you. Thank you.
And then the second part of your question, five and nine, sorry, fuller called. A lead has been identified in the council and that will be James Henderson to lead this piece of work. But I have asked him, because you very vocally, as a committee, have asked to be involved in any working groups that are set up. And I have advised him of that. And I will get you an update, which I will provide to you.
Thank you for that. Well, it's no point being a committee unless we're vocal about our opinions, is it? No, it's good.
Absolutely not, Curtis. That's why you're here.
We'll take Marianne next, then Mark, and then draw this to a close, if that's okay. So Marianne.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks to Karen for saying some words about Paul Wood, because he really was a lovely man. He'd be hugely missed. And thanks to officers for putting this report together. It's nice for people who've been on this committee for a while to see the amount of work that's actually been done over the past couple of years. So thank you for all that. Just one question on page 44 under planet. So we had the biodiversity and nature recovery task and finish group last year and made a series of recommendations. So just wondered, one of those was a glyphosate review. So just a review of the glyphosate use within Parks and Countryside. Obviously, we did recognise that all council approach is needed, but we, you know, said let's just start with the Parks and Countryside review. That falls under this committee. So I just wondered if we got a time scale for when we can expect that?
We have. I can't give it you. I need to refer to Ruth, who's working with colleagues in environmental regulations to get that to you. So I will, I will make sure you've got that date after the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
315, 2 and 4, a review of trees and woodland strategy, including the outline of a tree planting strategy. Well, I come from a suburban rural ward of Stockbridge, but I'd like to point out that these two things, the item four bereavement strategy can be combined. Wood, new tree planting can be combined with woodland burials. And I think this would take a massive amount of pressure off prime sites in the city if where this can be done, subject to feasibility studies. I mean, comments were raised about maybe Stockbridge is too waterlogged, but feasibility, there's lots of different, you know, grades of land in Stockbridge. And we would certainly welcome woodland burial sites. It's the way forward because we want to increase the number of trees. So we want these two things combining really, planting trees and woodland burials.
I think that's also something that when the bereavement strategy comes back to committee and we have a discussion about it, we can probably have a bigger, wider discussion as well. Do you have anything to add to that, Lisa?
Completely agree. And as councillor Crossland explained, when the bereavement strategy comes in front of the committee, it will, it will be exploring woodland burials. So, and part of the, sorry, so tree planting is one part of the trees and woodland strategy. And that was, that strategy was approved in 2018. And it has a number of years left to run. As we'll come on to a point about the green and open spaces strategy as well, all of these things linked together and they're all interrelated. So you're absolutely right, councillor Whitaker, and we will, it will be a consideration of the trees and woodland strategy, green and open spaces, bereavement strategy, all interrelated. So thank you, we will make that point.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. So the report contains recommendations for approval on page 39. I'm sure we've all read them. Are we, are we all agreed with the recommendations? Agreed, excellent. So those have passed unanimously, those recommendations have passed unanimously. So item nine now is the 23-24 final outrun budget position. This is from page 53 on the agenda pack and I believe Jane is presenting this report.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jane Willby, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting in the council's Deputy Section 151 Officer. So today on the agenda, you've got two papers. You've got the final out term position for 23-24 and also the quarter one position for 24-25. Reason for that was because of the delayed meeting in June. So I'll not probably cover a huge amount of information from the earlier paper, but it's there for information. The overall position for 23-24 was an overspend against budget of 15.6 million against net revenue budget of 497 million, which is about a variance of 3.1%. And by the first quarter of 24-25, we're projecting an overspend of 34.3 million, which is approximately 7% of our net revenue budget. The main drivers are increased service demands, rising costs and reduced funding. The key areas affected are housing and homelessness, adults and children's social care, SEN home to school transport. And the underlying issues that have been affecting the prior year's position have not gone away. And the reason for the out term position that is worse in 24-25 is due to our ability to offset those overspends. In 23-24, we benefited from some interest income above budgeted levels from treasury activities. And we also had some one-off income in social care that brought that overspend down. We don't have the same level of mitigations this year. Inflation has been a significant contributor, increasing the overall cost base. And in some cases, service costs are rising above the rate of inflation. On top of this, funding levels have not kept pace with these rising costs, creating a significant gap. The fact remains that Sheffield has 26% less, or 858 pounds per household, to spend in real terms when compared to 2010-11. This reduction is well above the national average of 18% or 556 pounds per dwelling. This is a severe reduction and it's placed additional strain on our ability to deliver services. The council sets aside reserves to manage the risk associated with budget delivery and expect to draw from this reserve to manage this year's overspend alongside a specific provision to manage the housing benefit subsidy loss issue. Using reserves is a short-term solution and is not sustainable. This is a serious financial position and our finance teams are working with officers across the council to identify and implement cost-saving measures. We are developing strategies to manage and mitigate demand pressures and efforts are being made to increase income wherever possible to address the overspend. The challenges that we face are not unique to Sheffield. They're part of the broader trend affecting the entire public sector. Pressures are growing across the NHS, schools, higher education institutions, which limit the potential for future government relief. The council's key response to these challenges is our Future Sheffield programme. The initiative is focused on transforming our services to create a more sustainable and efficient operating model. Transformation is essential to ensure that we continue to deliver statutory services and support city growth. Our transformation efforts are aligned with the broader strategic goals and play a huge part in our budget setting process this year. Our medium-term financial strategy published in July identified a budget gap of 68.9 million over the next four years, with 31 falling in next year. Our focus is on long-term financial sustainability, which underscores the importance of the ongoing transformation efforts. The Communities' Parks and Leisure Committee is forecasting an underspend of 0.1 million against a smaller revenue budget at quarter one. The position represents a good financial management and generally, as discussed earlier, falling within, you know, good variances for the service budget areas. To conclude, we are facing serious financial challenges and projected overspend and taking immediate actions and engaging in long-term transformation efforts to address the challenges. The collaboration across the council and strategic initiatives under Future Sheffield are critical to navigate those challenges. And we're encouraging all departments to continue working closely with finance teams to contribute ideas for cost reduction, demand management and income generation. The next update to the committees will be to the Finance and Performance Committee in November and December to all the policy committees. I'm happy to take any questions you might have about the budget. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So just to confirm, I think we will take, take the votes separately for the two agenda items, but we can ask the questions together. That's okay. Does anybody wish to ask any questions? So just got Laura.
Are we taking questions on the first quarter now as well then? Yeah, okay. So we're forecasting an overall underspend for the first quarter, aren't we? I just want to know, I've got two questions, where are the risk areas that we need to closely watch? And I see that vacant posts are contributing to the underspend. So I just wondered, that's going to have, what are the knock-on effects on service delivery? Thank you.
I'll pass you in a minute. Is that all right, Lisa? Yeah, sure. So in the, the main areas in there are in parks. So I think we've got small overspends in parks and also in bereavement services. And we've got some underspends, which as you rightly say, we've referred to as vacancies within the service. As I understand, as part of the overall restructure as referred to at the beginning of the meeting, lots of that will be sort of covered. I think we've got some areas where we know that we need to realign budgets to the right establishment in, in certain areas. So we have got a natural offset there, which was carried forward from the previous year. So Lisa, if you wanted to carry, cover anything in further detail.
Thank you. Yeah, just to add to what Jane said. I think the areas that we are aware of and monitoring closely are bereavement services fee income, which is not as high as anticipated and not in line with our increased income. This committee is aware of those issues. The cost to deliver bereavement services and medical legal services is also higher than, than the allocated budget currently, hence the work that we're doing on a bereavement, long-term bereavement strategy and understanding that service. I have asked Ruth to come and sit by me just to give you a little bit more information about the vacancies that are being held currently and what our plans are around that, because that isn't sustainable. We obviously want to return a balanced budget, but holding vacancies is not necessarily a long-term solution. So Ruth, do you want to give us?
Yeah, me too. So I'm Ruth Bell, Head of Parks and Countryside. So first of all, just to say that Parks and Countryside is reporting an overall overspend, albeit a relatively small one. And that is linked to a capital project that after completion saw a significant additional cost applied to it without corresponding capital budget being available. So that currently sits within Parks and Countryside. And we don't have any budget or any available mitigation at the moment. We are working closely with our colleagues in CDS and finance on that particular issue. With regard to vacancy management, it, it's, it's very easy to think if you've, if you've held vacancies for a little while, you can just delete them. What we, what we are seeing in Parks and Countryside is that there are, there are teams and parts of the city where we're simply not able to deliver the work at the standard that we want to do. And the asks of us are changing. You, you'll all recall the conversations we've had around the Environment Act and things like that. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that when we do the GOS item. We need to manage our land better. And in order to be able to do that, we need to have the people in the right places doing the work that we need them to do. My colleague Simon Ross is currently looking at what the expectations are on each part of the city and how we might deliver that service. We're looking to do a few things. So first of all, we, you may, you may be aware, annually, we recruit seasonal workers who work through the summer, which is obviously our peak grass mowing time, because we have so much grass across the city that we don't have enough staff in our standard staffing to be able to, to manage that. We're currently looking at what a revised model might look like, what winter works we also have to do, because we have significant works on shrub and hedge management to do within the, within the winter that we often outsource and whether or not there's a different model of, of doing that by using our existing staff. We're also increasing, very excitingly, our apprenticeship programme in the hopes that we can have a boost of new staff with new skills that will allow us to manage, manage our, all of our green spaces in the way in which they should be managed. So what we're doing is looking at what we had before and then what we need and what the gap is, is between those things, so that we can have the right model across the city. So those vacancies are unlikely to stay for very long. But what we won't be doing is simply replacing them like for like. We'll put in place what we need, where we need it in the city, hopefully.
Thank you for jumping in there with a very detailed response. So next we'll take Rob. But before that, does anybody else wish to ask? So Mark after Rob, perfect. So Rob?
Yeah, so you preempted one of the questions I was going to ask on apprenticeships, especially around vacancies, but also about kind of, kind of future-proofing our work going forward. It was just on the numbers wise. If the, with the, with the underspend that's related to the vacancies, if we were fully staffed, how would that affect the number? Just so we have a little bit of idea as to how much that is actually impacting the numbers? Because I think we can all look and go, yeah, underspend, we're getting this under control. But if it is kind of indicating a large problem where that is the only mask, kind of how are we, how are we faring?
Councillor Reeves, we don't have the number in front of us, but we collectively believe it's around 200,000.
So, so if, so it's a vacancy cost of 200,000, so would we still be underspent? No, so it would be an overspend if we didn't have those vacancies? Thank you for clearing.
Can I, can I just come in and say, sorry?
No, please do.
The, the overspend that I mentioned earlier, just to be really clear, that is a one-year, one-off overspend. So what we're not saying is that were we to fill these vacancies, next year we would have the same overspend, the year after we would have the same overspend. Certainly for Parks and Countryside, we, we're not rushing to recruit to those vacancies in part so that we can offset some of that overspend. And next year, you would hope that we would have those people in post, we won't have that one-off capital cost. And so our budget should, I'm going to touch the wood when I say this, be balanced. And sorry, just to add on the, on the apprentice point that you, you, you said that I'd covered. We've currently got six apprentices in Parks and Countryside and we are in the process of getting another, I think it's another four. And we, we, as I think you know, we're doing something a little bit different this time. Often when you have apprentices in Parks and Countryside, they exclusively look at, for example, the gardening role. So in the very traditional parks and public realm spaces, this year we are very specifically widening that out to allow people to, to experience what our rangers do, what happens in our woodland and countryside sites and things like that, so that people can A, get a really broad understanding of our green spaces, but then hopefully have more opportunity when they finish those apprenticeships so that they can go into lots of different green space roles, not just the very traditional parks where you cut grass and, and deal with flower beds.
So I, I wasn't kind of accusing of, well, the, on the overspend, underspend thing of trying to, I was just wanting to say, okay, what is visibility? So we have, we know the full picture on the apprenticeships. So kind of cross-cutting apprenticeships, the company I work for has a lot of these apprenticeships. They jump around and learn different skills. Increasingly, we're in a position where people don't stay in one profession the entire life. But also as we get into, especially around GOS and the, kind of the blended way the nature works, trying to silo people into, and you just talk about parks, we just talk about woodland. They're one of the same or increasingly so. So I'd like to commend you on that kind of forward-looking approach. Thank you.
The figure's about 145,000 currently.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So Mark and then we'll draw this to a close.
You mentioned grass verges and mowing. This year, out, out here where I lived, there was an extensive use of weed killer round the edges of grass verges. I believe the weed killer still being used is Roundup, which contains still glyphosate. I know it's going to be phased out is glyphosate, but Roundup still contains it. However, what I would like to say, reflecting the opinions of the people However, what I would like to say, reflecting the opinions of the people I represent in Stockbridge, we would rather have slightly longer grass and no weed killer. I mean, so it's not necessarily a cost option, but that would be a better option, in my view.
I'm really sorry to disappoint you. Grass verges aren't us. So grass verges are part of the AMI contract. So Parks and Countryside do not use glyphosate within the green spaces, in Parks and Countryside. Do you mean within our park spaces? In Parks and Countryside, we don't use glyphosate. We agreed to that a number of years ago. The only place it's used is in very targeted use around, for example, Japanese knotweed. It's used to treat those invasive species. We don't use it within our parks and green spaces. Parks and Countryside maintain housing sites on behalf of housing with an SLA in place. And we do use glyphosate at their request on housing sites. So it's the same staff, but they do different things. Housing sites, currently we do have some glyphosate use. Parks and Countryside, we don't have any. And grass verges are part of the AMI contract. So I'm afraid they sit both outside our service and also outside of this committee. I apologize.
This was the, sorry, but this was the point of councillor Elliot. So we'd done the glyphosate reduction programme in Parks and Countryside. And part of the initial work that we did on that policy with members was around looking at the use of glyphosate on the highways and also across in housing sites. And that's the point that councillor Elliot was making, is when can we expect an update and a review of that policy across the other services in the council? So we will bring that back to you.
Thank you for that. So after all that, I'm going to bring our attention to the recommendations for approval on page 55. Are we all agreed with the recommendations for item nine on page 55? If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. We all agreed? Passed unanimously. Excellent. And we'll move straight on to the recommendations for item 10, which is also the next budget item, which we also discussed. These recommendations for approval are on page 71. If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. Are we all agreed? Excellent. Another one passed unanimously. So item 11. Thank you for that as well, Jane and Ruth, jumping in on that. So item 11, creating the conditions for impact and legacy of the Sheffield North East Model Neighbourhood work. I got that out, that was good. This starts on page 85 of the agenda pack. And we are hearing from Helen, Eleanor, Lucy from the ICB and Helen from Voluntary Action Sheffield. So welcome to our committee. Perfect, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Helen Watson, I'm an acting public health consultant in the public health team here at the council. And I'll just let colleagues introduce themselves who are also here today.
Hello, I'm Helen Sims, I'm the chief executive of Voluntary Action Sheffield.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lucy Ettridge, I'm the assistant director of health inequalities for the Sheffield teams, part of NHS South Yorkshire.
And we've also got Eleanor, who's just here with that microphone. Eleanor Russell, assistant director of public health.
So we're bringing this proposal to you today for approval for three things. Firstly, to commission a contract for services worth up to £430,000. Secondly, for a grant award of up to £178,000. And finally, for remuneration for participation up to a value of £180,000. And we'll go into a bit more detail about all of those as we go through the item. So background to this item, we know in Sheffield that there are large unfair gaps in length and quality of life between different groups of people. Those gaps don't happen by chance, they're part of a pattern of unfairness that's driven by deeper causes that we can do something about. We know that fairness really matters to us as a city. It's a really clear theme that runs throughout the Sheffield City Goals. In fact, goal eight says we want to shape our city around fairness, wellbeing and tackling poverty. A community development approach is really key to addressing these unfair gaps in length and quality of life, because it focuses on empowering local communities to come together and take action on a wide range of factors that influence in their health. And it's based in an understanding that's really clearly articulated in the council plan, that communities and people within them are the city's greatest asset. They have knowledge, skills and strengths, which mean they're well placed to identify issues, to respond to challenges, develop solutions and to thrive. So the way that we and other public sector organisations and businesses collaborate with, that is work closely together with communities and our voluntary community and faith sector partners is really key to creating a fair and healthy city. The Sheffield North East Model Neighbourhood work is a five-year community development approach to creating health and wellbeing and addressing those unfair gaps in length and quality of life. And I'll just hand over to Lucy Ettridge, who's leading on the work, to tell you a little bit more.
Hi, thanks Helen. So the North East Model Neighbourhood is a priority for the Health and Care Partnership, and that is where all the NHS, all the trusts, the NHS and the council, Voluntary Action Sheffield come together to set the priorities for the city in the health and care space. And it's one of our seven priorities. So what is it? So it's a community-led, five-year programme that wants to reduce health inequalities by creating health in communities. We want to empower, strengthen and connect communities, because we know that communities will thrive and improve their health through setting these conditions. So we say it's the North East, but it's actually predominantly four areas within the North East. And looking at the indices of multiple deprivation, they are the areas with the greatest health needs. And they are Burngrieve, and it's not the ward, it's the middle super-out area, because it's quite a small geographical area, but that includes Pittsmore. It's Furvale, Furth Park, but again, not the whole ward, just part of Furth Park and Longley. And we picked these areas, like I said, because of the huge challenges facing the area, but also they're brilliant communities, they're really proud of where they live. And there's fantastic voluntary community sector, so there's a lot for us to build on. So this is not about finding out what's wrong and solving the problems, this is building on the strengths and what works. So we're committed to invest in these areas over the next five years. So they will take action on what matters to them. So this is not new for the city, this is not new for the council or for us, but it's different for the NHS. We're not going in and telling people what's wrong with their areas. It isn't about commissioning new services, it's investing in people to take action on what matters to them. And we're very clear that this is a non-medical model. So we're in year two of the programme now, and the first year, we focused on building foundations, creating relationships, and we helped to fund, we helped to invest in seven voluntary community sector organisations to help improve their capacity and also to free up so they could actually help drive the work, but also just scale up what they do and just keep the doors open, because the risk is actually over the next five years that a lot of voluntary community sector organisations actually may close the doors. So the first year really was moving at pace of trust, and it has been quite slow. So year two, we've, today actually, we're going to end engagement. So we've gone out to communities, what's great about your area, what matters to you? And we're going to take all that information and pull into four community plans, which hopefully we'll roll out in a couple of months' time. But key parts of the programme are learning, we want to influence policy, we want to influence policy locally, which was linked into this work, and also regionally and nationally. And part of it as well is working with a think tank called New Local to create an evaluation framework, so to demonstrate impact, so we can get more funding. And again, you know, this programme and this investment will help us do that. And we're saying we want to change Sheffield one neighbourhood at a time, so we're starting in the North East. And through investment and through helping legacy through this investment, we can move to other areas. And now I'll hand over to Helen.
Back to me. Oh, sorry. It's okay. So the aim of our proposal is to ensure that the North East Model Neighbourhood work has the greatest possible impact and lasting legacy. So greatest possible impact means that the work will fully meet all its intended aims and will see improved health and wellbeing of the people living most for neighbourhoods in the North East, which will contribute, we hope, to a reduction in the unfair gaps in length and quality of life. Lasting legacy means that the work will have an impact on the way that we do things in other parts of the city and into the future. Adopting more collaborative approaches to creating health and wellbeing with communities and strengthening and sustaining Sheffield VCS, which is so crucial to enable that future way of working. Based on examples in other parts of the country, we expect that this will result in greater health creation, prevention of disease and disability, which as well as improving the quality of life for individuals, also reduces downstream demand for healthcare services and means more resources can be allocated to activity that leads to greater health and wellbeing. So what are we proposing to do? Well, we've set out a 24-month programme that you can see detailed in the papers. It's got three concurrent work streams, and we've developed that by reviewing evidence in the academic literature, learning from other similar work across the UK and talking with our key partners across the city to really dig into what will support or hinder the work having the greatest possible impact and lasting legacy in the city. So the first work stream is focused on developing collaborative behaviours to equip VCS and public service colleagues who are directly involved in the work in the North East to work together effectively so they can deliver the work with the greatest possible impact. We're planning to commission an expert organisation to co-design and deliver a bespoke collaborative leadership development programme, and that will be for 100 people from VCS organisations and 100 people from public service organisations who are directly involved in the work in the North East. We're really aware that a lack of core funding in VCS organisations will be a barrier to releasing people to participate, so we're going to offer to remuneration for participation, so funding, sending VCS organisations for each of the 100 VCS leaders who can attend with a total budget of up to £180,000. The second work stream focuses on ensuring that the learning from the North East work can be used to catalyse wider cultural change across organisations and sectors at multiple levels towards greater collaboration in Sheffield. So we don't want the North East work to be a one-off, we want to be able to use the learning to fundamentally change the way we do things in the city, so that other communities can benefit into the future. That looks like moving away from doing things to people, to doing things with people in communities, acknowledging their strengths and assets, and developing new ways of working together to create health and wellbeing. So that part of the work, the second work stream, will also be led by the same commission expert organisation of work stream one, with a total contract value for both work stream one and two combined of £430,000. The third work stream is about investing in community anchors. So that means supporting wider Sheffield VCS capability building, focusing on up to 25 organisations that have been historically under-invested in, but who have the potential to mature as community anchors. So a grant agreement worth up to £178,000 will be put into place with Voluntary Action Sheffield, who will lead the work stream and establish a diverse steering group to support the work. And I'll hand to Helen to say a little bit more about what community anchors are and why they're so important.
Thanks Helen. So what are community anchors? In our complex ecosystem that is the voluntary sector in Sheffield, we've got about 3,500 organisations, groups. We uniquely benefit from a number of long-established, some are long-established, community anchor organisations, and they are either place-based or they support a community of interest. And the Health Foundation describes anchor institutions as large organisations whose long-term sustainability is tied to wellbeing of populations they serve. And I think this definition underpins for me what community anchors are within the voluntary sector. They're established local organisations who share their experience, their contacts, their relationships, which are really key, knowledge, resources and expertise with other local organisations, as well as providing those frontline services. They are supporting the ecosystem of the voluntary sector where they're at, whether that's locally in a neighbourhood or whether that's dispersed across a community of interest. And the anchors work in enabling and co-productive ways, which Helen has sort of referenced, that asset-based approach, strength-based approach to people and places. So to name some community anchors in the city, we have a number that are place-based, Healy Trust, SAW, who are working in the North East. And we have a number of anchors supporting communities of interest, such as SACMA, SADACA, ISRAAC, supporting specific communities, and they of course have spaces that they operate out of as well. So the value of community anchor organisations is that they bridge gaps in policy and delivery or extend reach to meet their local community need. So for example, they can deliver culturally appropriate health creation, they can bring support to marginalised communities who they have relationships of trust with, they can mobilise action in a specific and targeted way, and they really can make investment in the city and assets work better together through localised insight and intelligence. So what we want to do is value those organisations, and we're going to do that in several ways. We're going to interview the community anchors that we've identified and any that come forward and identify themselves as playing that role in the city and understand what they need, what their current challenges are. And I think we've cited some of them, the lack of funding, stitching together of funding often that is short-term. But more perhaps imperatively in this work is to bring together a network of community anchors, because we do have established experienced anchors and we have some that are more emergent. And we want to bring together a network that brings status, learning, more collaborative working together as a key part of that ecosystem in the sector. The way we're going to do that is to set up an independent steering group with stakeholders, so some people working within community anchors and others working in grassroots organisations, where we can get a really good range of and diversity of people to influence how we shape this work, but really start with those community anchors and say, what do you need? How can we support your capacity? And come together as a network to understand what are the principles that underpin good community anchor work? What does that look like? How are you representative of your communities and in the work that you deliver? And the grant that has been proposed here, we want as much of that grant to go directly to those organisations to make sure it's delivering on support that they've identified that they need, so it will be quite tailored in that respect. But that's the plan for part three of this investment. Thank you.
Thanks Helen. So just very finally, where is the funding coming from for this proposal? So if approved by committee, the proposal will be funded from the ring-fenced Public Health Grant Reserves, as it's already been through an internal officer-led process of screening and scoring to determine that it meets the Public Health Grant requirements and align strategically with public health priorities, the council plan and city goals. I'll hand back to you, Chair.
Excellent, thank you. I think it was Lucy that mentioned about how this isn't telling communities what's wrong with them, it's about listening to communities and working with them, and that really resonated with me, I love that in here. So in the interest of time, I think I'll take a few questions and then hand back over to you guys. So we've got Laura, does anybody else want to ask any questions on this? Laura and then Marianne, that's okay.
I'm going to make a comment and I'll come to my question at the end, so there will be a question. I really welcome this. I think it's a landmark report, actually, and it shows a cultural shift from the paternalistic approach to a collaborative one, which is something I championed in the realms of public health 25 years ago. And I think we shouldn't think of it as a grant, it's an investment. It's an investment in our most deprived communities. And I think also, it's downstream, it should take a lot of pressure off primary care. And that's what we need to see in the NHS, relieve the pressure on the NHS. We have to take different approaches to tackling health inequalities. So I think it's wonderful. And my question is, could this be rolled out to other city council services as a model? Looking at the INVOLVE report we had done about co-design and et cetera. I would really like this to be seen as an example for other council services, because I think it is a huge cultural shift. So thank you for this report, it's really welcome.
Thank you Laura. Marianne, and then we'll hand back over to, and then Rob.
Thank you Chair. Thank you, this is really positive. And like you say, I think promoting fairness is a really clear objective for Sheffield, isn't it? It's a thread that runs through the council priorities. And we all know that some communities face huge challenges, and I think the VCS is, you know, the best place to work with the communities. You talked about greatest possible impact and lasting legacy. And I think, you know, proper funding for the VCS, in my experience, is the most effective way of doing that, because they're very good at sort of making the public health money go as far as possible. Just a quick question. It refers to being endorsed by the Health and Wellbeing Board and the Health and Care Partnership. So has it gone to them for sort of feedback, or will you sort of report on that once you've got the funding decision?
Shall I reply, or shall I?
Yeah, yeah, if you want.
Just to reply to your question first, it hasn't yet been to those, because it hasn't been approved by yourselves. But it does link very closely to the But we, it does link very closely to the new health and wellbeing strategy and some of the radical shifts in there that we're talking about greater collaboration. The, within the paper, you would have noted that we talk about the Collaborating for Health Working Group. That's a group that's mandated by the Health and Wellbeing Board and it is tied into there. So, and several Health and Wellbeing Board members, including Helen, sit in that group. So I'd say it's within the conversations being had in the city, but it hasn't been endorsed yet. We'll take it there once committee has approved it.
Thank you. I was thinking that because it's very closely aligned, isn't it? So thanks.
Shall I reply to the other question?
Yes, please.
Yeah. And can it be a model? Oh, I really hope so. That would be fantastic. And I think in terms of, you know, framing around legacy, that's exactly what we're talking about in that second work stream. Taking the learning from what's happening in the North East and using it to stimulate cultural, cultural change. That's not just about health because health is about everything, isn't it? Everything we do in the council is creating health and those wider determinants, wider factors. So absolutely, yeah, that would be our vision. Do you want to say anything?
Could we add a condition in about this, something about this being, oh, enlighten me Lisa. Where would we, how would make sure that it's embedded in the council? That we monitor how this work goes and then feed it into other council services? I don't want it to get lost because we often say that and then it doesn't happen. So I really want it to be embedded in ways of working.
Take that away and have discussions at strategic and executive director level and ensure that those conversations happen. I think in terms of this committee, we can incorporate it into anything that we talk to you about. Any proposals or policies that the committee makes a decision on around the equality, diversity and inclusion section of reports that we have at least considered, the co-designing and different ways of working and not taking necessarily that paternal approach. So yeah, we can take that commitment as a committee and I will take it away to have further conversations.
Is it okay to make a suggestion as well? And I think particularly around participation of all directorates in that second work stream would be fantastic because that's the, that's the part where we're trying to embed the learning.
I think what might be useful for us as well is if we have an update briefing in however, in a few months' time to know how it's all going and then if there's any recommendations that we want to make to the wider council, we could put something together and then refer that to maybe strategy and resources. That might be a way of balancing that out. So if we take Rob next, does anybody else want to speak after Rob? No, perfect. So Rob.
Thank you for the report and the work you're doing around public health in this part of the city is invaluable. I was, I was, had the pleasure of being at the launch for church in Page Hall yesterday. The focus very much on kind of building communities and bringing them together. And it's, it's, I can see the need that those communities need on kind of joined up public health thinking. The thing that actually came out of that is a lot of people coming in from into Page Hall, into Fervale, into Firth Park, from a kind of a wider areas. And I noticed that you used the MSOAs. Would, like, would there be capacity that if someone from outside those areas that you've noted in the report or even community organisations from outside those areas but did work inside those areas, would you be supportive of them kind of involved, getting involved in that network, in the work you do?
Thank you. Yeah. One of the, the first principle of the work actually is to recognise communities of interest as well as place. So we are actively working with organisations that support people that live in those communities but are citywide organisations. And so that is definitely part of it. And also it is a really good question about, is it that people live there or, you know, some people socialise in the area, come in for work? And it's very much around helping the areas to thrive. You know, hopefully this work might leverage in more support so they might become thriving economies as well. It's very much around the people that live there. But, you know, I was in Burngrieve the other day just talking to people and actually they come in and socialise in Burngrieve because that's where the social connections are. So we're saying, you know, if people come in from outside the area but, you know, want to get involved or then definitely that's part of it. Certainly no hard borders. So it's, you know, if people are drawn to Burngrieve or drawn to Page Hall, that's family or they've got, you know, a history there, then, you know, we want them to get involved and benefit from the activities and socialisation as well.
Yeah. So it actually came out from a conversation I was having with someone who only turned up at the church because their favourite shop, they didn't live in the area, their favourite shop, their Roman family, their thing. Something's happening behind me. Their favourite shop, go shopping in where they have the good, the good food was just around the corner. So it's kind of that interaction that people, well, MSOAs are the most logical thing in the world.
I spoke to somebody on Friday that travels into Burngrieve from Sharrow every day for cheap coffee and the sort of sense of sort of belonging he gets from Burngrieve. So, yeah, we want him to benefit.
I can attest that the bank of and kind of sweets down in that part of the city are next level.
Right. Thank you everybody. Thank you again for the report, very detailed and very well-written as well. So it does include recommendations on page 87. If we, if any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. But are we all agreed with the recommendations? Excellent. Passed unanimously. So well done. And thank you again for a good report and a good presentation. Thank you. So item 12 is a grant to Voluntary Action Sheffield to develop and evaluate support systems for frontline voluntary and community sector staff. This is from page 109 of the agenda pack and I believe Anna should be presenting.
Chair, councillor. Sorry Chair, should I have declared this earlier? I work for a youth organisation in the city that may benefit from this funding as they are a member of VAS. I just wanted to declare that. Apologies for not saying it earlier.
I will seek legal advice.
Sorry. So your employer could benefit from this specific grant?
Potentially. They are, they're a member of VAS and one of a VAS pile of programmes where one of the organisations they sometimes reach out to.
It sounds like it could be a DPI in which case I'd suggest that you step off this decision.
Would you like me to leave the room or?
Yes, you were, thank you for raising that.
Well remembered, just in time. No, it's fine. Thank you. Perfect. So I believe it's Anna that's presenting.
Thank you councillor Crossland. Good afternoon. I'm Anna Twells. I'm a health improvement principal from Public Health. I'll start with the purpose of this proposal and then I'll provide an overview. The proposal is to ask the committee to consider approving a grant to Voluntary Action Sheffield. This is a grant of up to £94,564 for a committee decision. And the grant is to support VAS's work to develop and evaluate support systems for frontline community and voluntary sector staff. The grant is for 14 months and the funding source is non-recurrent Public Health Grant Reserves. So to give you some background, earlier this year, directorates across the council had the opportunity to submit proposals for Public Health Grant Reserves. Public Health therefore engaged with VAS to seek to understand how best to support the work of the VCS with regard to public mental health, which is my remit. And that is work to improve mental health and wellbeing and prevent mental illness. In response, VAS highlighted the pressing mental health needs of frontline staff. We've had the pandemic, the ongoing cost of living crisis and more recently, the acts of racism and potential violent disorder in the city. And the VCS has played and continues to play a critical role in the response to all of this, often reaching people and communities that organisations such as the council cannot. But this has had its impact on the mental health and wellbeing of frontline VCSE staff who do not necessarily always have access to the same type and range of support that say, for example, council or NHS staff have. Now, this not only impacts individuals within the workforce but the continuity, quality and reach of the sector as a whole. And VAS therefore put forward this particular proposal for Public Health Grant Reserves. VAS have recently had some funding from Health Education England to test clinical supervision as one way to better support frontline staff. This is a reflective form of supervision. It has a good evidence base in supporting staff wellbeing and is associated with lower burnout, greater staff retention and job satisfaction. Clinical supervision has worked well in some organisations in the city but has not worked well across the cultural diversity of the VCS in Sheffield. In particular, it has not worked well in global majority organisations. So with this new proposed grant funding, rather than deciding on the specific type of support to be provided at the outset, this time VAS will work in partnership with five VCS organisations in Sheffield to design, implement and evaluate the support for frontline staff. Working with global majority organisations in the city will be a priority. It's probably helpful for me to state at this point as well that the five organisations are not yet known and there will be a selection process. So organisations will need to apply to participate in this particular proposal. So not only will this work benefit the organisations that participate, but the learning and evaluation from this work will be shared. That's not only with other VCSE organisations in the city but the wider health and care system in Sheffield and South Yorkshire in order to influence thinking and practice on how best to provide culturally appropriate and inclusive support for frontline staff. Now, we had considered doing nothing, i.e. not putting forward a proposal for Public Health Grant Reserves. However, given the pressing need to better support frontline workers in this particular sector, this option was rejected. And the recommendation of this paper is for the committee to approve the grant for this proposal. Councillor Crossland, I'll hand back to you to field any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. I've had two indications to speak. Does anybody else want to speak as well? Perfect. So I've got Karen and then Rob.
Thank you. I think this is really, really important. You know, these voluntary sector organisations, as we've just been hearing, are the backbone of all our community work. But they need support as well, you know, they need to look after themselves as well as they're not there to give the support. So it's just a comment really to say that I really support this. I think it's important. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Rob.
It's along the similar lines to councillor Gowan. After 10 years, I've just had to stand down from running a homeless support charity due to burnout of both myself and my volunteers. So I, I think support is an understatement as to what I feel towards this project. So thank you so much for bringing it forward.
Excellent. Would you like to add anything else before we move to the vote then?
I think just to say thank you for those comments and I think there are different schools of thought, aren't there, with regard to leadership? I'm very much of the camp that leadership is about taking great care of people in your charge.
Well said, definitely. So the report contains recommendations for approval on page 111. Are we all agreed? Agreed unanimously. Excellent. Again, I would like to, I think, pass on my thanks to all the volunteers in Sheffield who have supported us recently but also through Covid. And I really hope that this gets going and is really good, builds that support structures for them as well because they've supported us so much. So thank you for this. Has Laura gone to get? Yeah. Thanks Laura. We'll wait for, wait them to come back before we start item 13. So item 13 is an update on Sheffield's Green and Open Spaces Strategy. This is from page 127 of the agenda pack and Ruth is presenting.
Thank you Chair. I'm not proposing to go through the report line by line, if that's okay, but just to summarise the key points. And so the report provides an update on Sheffield's Green and Open Spaces Strategy, or GOS as we refer to it. The strategy was published in 2010 and it runs through to 2030. The strategy focuses on improving the quality, accessibility and sustainability of Sheffield's parks, woodlands and other green spaces across the city. And the report includes information about the key objectives of the strategy. And it highlights that overall, this strategy seeks to make Sheffield a greener, more livable city whilst addressing environmental challenges and improving residents' quality of life. And the report highlights key national and for that matter, international changes that have taken place since the report was originally, since the strategy was originally published in 2010. All of those have had a significant impact on green spaces and the management of those green spaces. The most notable of those are austerity, which of course saw budgets reduced across the country for lots of things, including green space management and development. The Covid-19 pandemic, which you're all aware, saw people discovering and rediscovering their local green spaces when our travel was so significantly restricted. And then most recently, as this committee has discussed at length, the Environment Act, which was enacted in 2021 and has had and will continue to have a significant impact on the management of green spaces with a real focus on enhancing environmental protection and sustainability in those spaces. The report that we've submitted to committee has a significant appendix attached to it which sets out progress so far against the strategy's strategic plan or its action plan. That 20-year plan has got more than 150 actions listed against four key themes, people, places, environment and sustainability and quality management. And you'll be able to see from the appendix that a lot of progress has been made over the last 14 years. Some key, key ones to highlight include the significant step change in the quality management of Sheffield's Green and Open Spaces. And that is measured both by the Sheffield Standard, which we talk about where we measure all of our green spaces and also the increase in the number of green flag status parks that we've got across, across the city. We talked earlier about the recently developed Parks and Countryside Apprentice Programme, which we're very proud of. The fact that there's been a real focus on improving the accessibility and inclusiveness of the city's green spaces, including facilities such as playgrounds and for welfare. Obviously, there is still a lot more to do on that. But a lot of progress has been made over the last 14 years. And then very topical with the weather that we're having today, natural flood management and SUDS, that is Sustainable Urban Drainage Systems, becoming a key consideration in the design and improvement of sites. With green spaces also being recognised for their ecosystem services. That took me by surprise, apologies. The strategy does have five years left to run and work there is absolutely not complete. And I think reviewing the strategic plan has really highlighted areas for a bit of renewed focus over the next few years as we come to the end of the strategy. A really key one there is that we, we still need to work very hard on securing long-term sustainable management and maintenance as an integral part of any major investments, capital or otherwise, within our green spaces. All too often, we do something that's really fantastic and we don't necessarily think about how we're going to pay for it longer term. We really have changed our focus there, but we do need to make sure that that's a key priority and is thought of at every stage of investment in green spaces. I do think it's really important to highlight the fact that delivery of the GOS is not exclusively done by Parks and Countryside. It's not exclusively done by Sheffield City Council. It's a shared endeavour by organisations across the city. And we know through having gone through that piece of work, looking at what was in the Strategic Action Plan and progress we've made, that it just, it simply isn't possible to capture every single piece of fantastic work done by our partners and colleagues who love and contribute to green spaces across the city. So I just wanted to say, if there's anybody watching this or listening to this who thinks you haven't mentioned my piece of work, it is not because it's not appreciated, it's just because we would have to be here for the next three years to talk about everything that's been done. I think that, yeah. I plan on sleeping within the next three years, so we'll see. The, the GOS both is and will continue to be the overarching guide for The GOS both is and will continue to be the overarching guide for improvement and development of Sheffield's green spaces, but with less than six years to run on the existing strategy. Along with the ongoing significant changes to the external environment, it is important that we start to consider what the next iteration of a green and blue strategy might look like, what the priorities are for the city and how the strategy should interact with the council's plans, city goals and also with the goals of our partners across the city. So on that, the committee is asked to, and I'm going to read out the recommendations if that's okay, because certainly the last one is a little bit wordy. The committee is asked to note the contents of the report, note the progress made on the action plan within the Green and Open Spaces Strategy 2010 to 2030, and also approve the creation of a task and finish group to consider the remaining years of the existing Green and Open Spaces Strategy, to be led by the Communities' Parks and Leisure Committee and drawing members of the Charity Trustees Subcommittee and Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committees and any other committees as appropriate, to consider planning for the final years of the existing strategy and then considering any further iterations of the strategy post 2030.
Excellent, thank you. While the appendix is quite big, I really like how it's actually laid out and you can cross-reference everything, it's really good. Anyway, enough of council, paper, geekery. I've had one indication of speaker so far, which is Rob. Does anybody else want to ask questions on this? Then Marianne, perfect, so Rob first.
Fantastic report, love, love the work that you've been putting in and I will be reading the appendix in full. Well, Laura's got more time on hand, I have these last few, but the, this is just something looking forward, I do think that the addition of blue is important. Now councillor Williams is not Chair and we've got councillor Crossland, I am going to say, I appreciate the kind of the wild swimming opportunities in Sheffield, the, maybe not on a day like today. And also kind of ways of getting outdoors, I know, I know the kind of the walking and the cycling and the football, but kind of open air activities in our green spaces more than that. I am a, I enjoy going bouldering in the peaks, so, and I know that we've got the sport strategy at the moment running through. So if we are looking forward into the 2030s or even just how we can change this for the last five years as we run into that, could we, I know that, again, that you've included the blueness of the strategy, whether we can have a kind of a bit of a cross-cutting referencing with the sport strategy to improve just general access to the outdoors?
Thank you councillor East. What you'll also see when you read the appendix in full is, is there is a lot of reference to the Sport and Physical Activity Team as well. And as Ruth said, a lot of the actions are interrelated. So yeah, that is a theme that is absolutely running through the deliverables on this. And going back to the point that we made, councillor Whittaker, the bereavement strategy, trees and woodland strategy, that there, sometimes we can see what I would call my services is sometimes a little bit disparate, but actually they're all, they're all, there's lots of common, commonality running through them. So yeah, we'll absolutely work together closely on that, yeah.
Marianne.
Thank you. Really welcome this. I think, you know, as you've explained, we do have a comprehensive strategy already, so it's not to devalue that, but I think, you know, as you've explained, we've got, we've moved on, haven't we, in some ways? And for me, there's two major things, there's the Environment Act and the statutory obligations under that, and then bringing in the blue. That's something that really resonated in the task and finish group as well. So we've got a green and blue strategy to acknowledge, you know, the importance of our rivers and waterways. So just really a request that the waterways groups are involved. There are so many groups in Sheffield, you know, interested in the water, so that they're involved in this sort of shared endeavour. And we might need a new name for it, if it's green and blue. On the task and finish, are we, in this committee, just being asked now to improve, approve it in principle? And then we'll talk about the numbers and everything after that. Okay, great.
It was the plan, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, for me, it's really about people who are interested in the subject and I think that's probably the most important thing. That's my perspective anyway.
If I can just add to that, councillor Crossland, I think one of the things we looked to the committee to do is actually decide how best to nominate representatives onto that task and finish group and whether you wanted to do that just from this committee or whether you wanted to widen it out across other councillors. So that is something that we'll be looking for your direction on.
I think my personal view is, I agree, whoever's interested, I think has a lot to learn from the successful bereavement task and finish group as well. I believe all councillors were invited to that. I can't remember the exact numbers of people who came, but it was quite a diverse group of people as well, from different groups. So I think there's a lot to be learned from that. So Rob?
So on membership of the task and finish group, I think I'm running through the different committees in my head and there are some which are more applicable. So this one possibly Transport, Climate Change and Regeneration. It might also be beneficial to have maybe just a single member and this can be a conversation about the task and finish group, make up a reserve member or a kind of a visiting member for someone from health, especially talking about the health impacts of having access to green and open spaces, possibly even ways to street scene, housing, like any committee that has got a kind of, some control over green space. I know with us looking after parks and also kind of outdoor activities, yes, but I wouldn't want to reserve it going, actually housing, you've got big amounts of green space, we're not going to involve you.
I'd be tempted to open it up to all councillors, but adding proviso that if 84 people decided to sign up, we can then scale it back. I don't know if that's a possibility in the...
Yes, it is. I think what we could do is take the same approach that we took with the Bereavement Services Strategy, which was go to all councillors, and then we can come back to you for review. If we are massively oversubscribed, then we can come back to committee, we can do a summary, come back to you with a view and we can, we can discuss it further. I think with the Bereavement Services Strategy, we weren't necessarily oversubscribed, it was a little bit of a logistical issue to try and, you know, try and plan in the sessions that members could attend. But yeah, we can certainly go out to all members and then see what response we get and then bring it back to committee for sign off.
That sounds good to me and hopefully lots of elections won't get in the way of this task and finish group. Are we all happy with, oh, Marianne, yeah.
Just wanted to add to that and say I think that's a really good idea. If you could let us know before that email goes out, because I think last time we all sort of took it upon ourselves in this committee to talk to our groups and just sort of ask people who might be interested. So you've got a bit of an idea who might be interested first. Yeah, thanks.
I think we're in agreement with that then about all members. Excellent. So if we've got no further comments, we will move to the recommendations on page 129 of the report. Are we all agreed?
Yeah.
Excellent, agreed unanimously. So finally, we move on to item 14, which is the cremator servicing contract approval and we'll be hearing from Ellie.
I'm Ellie Fraser, I'm Head of Bereavement and Colonial Services. So I'm here today with what is quite an operational item and my request is for your approval to enter into a cremator servicing and maintenance contract with a company called IFZW and that's for the cremators at Hutcliff Wood Crematorium for a period of up to 16 years, which we believe to be the remaining operational lifespan of those cremators. So just from a background perspective, you're all aware that we operate a crematorium at Hutcliff Wood. In order to do so, we must have a permit to cremate and that permit covers several operational aspects of running the crematorium, including air quality, emissions, the monitoring of it and reporting of any breaches. I'm sure you can appreciate that cremators are large, expensive specialist pieces of equipment and it's really important that we look after them properly for several reasons, but including meeting the requirements of our permit, the safety of our staff and customers, to be cost effective, obviously looking after them appropriately, make sure they run efficiently and we avoid any expensive repairs and to prevent breakdowns. Breakdowns ultimately result in funerals being cancelled, which is something we want to avoid at all costs. So due to the design of cremators, servicing and maintenance can only practically be carried out by the cremator manufacturer. At the moment, we purchase scheduled servicing and any ad hoc repairs from IFZW but through individual purchasing decisions. That works okay, particularly for scheduled servicing where we can plan them in, but we are reliant on IFZW to respond quickly if we have any issues, even though they have, they are not contracted to do so. So quite simply, we think it would be more efficient, more secure and offer us better value for money if we entered into a contract with IFZW for the provision of these services and it seems sensible to do so for the remaining lifespan of these cremators. We've been working with colleagues in legal and procurement services to draft a suitable contract and I am here today for asking your permission to enter into that contract.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from anybody? No? There you go. Yeah, indeed. So the report contains recommendations on page 179. Are we all agreed? Agreed unanimously. And that brings us to the close of the Communities' Parks and Leisure Meeting. Thank you everybody, there we go.